Good evening and thank you everyone for attending. We're going to begin our meeting at 6:30 PM on December 9th. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance to the flag led by me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to be a republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone and good evening. The purpose of our meeting this evening is to receive presentations from search committees that are proposing to assist the Wayne Westland Board of Education in its search for a superintendent. Mr. Neal, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Heinz.
Hey.
Myself, President. Mr. Buckleloo.
Here.
Mrs. McDowell.
I'm here.
Mrs. Walker, absent, Dr. Weaver.
Here.
And President Cox.
I am here and let the record reflect, Mrs. Walker is absent, excused. Next item on our agenda, 454.19, are citizens' comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for citizens that would like to comment on items that appear on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on tonight's agenda?
No, he doesn't.
Thank you on behalf of your proxy. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the introduction of Mr. John Silvery from the Michigan Leadership Institute. Mr. Silvery is here to present the proposal on behalf of the Michigan Leadership Institute for their services of assisting the board in identifying a superintendent. Mr. Silvery, welcome. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. My pleasure. Very happy to be back. I think, as you know, I've been here before. Did some quite extensive work with Wayne Westland Schools on strategic planning and great level of reconfiguration. And so, I'm really happy to be back with you again and sharing some information on our superintendent's search services tonight. I will say that of all the services that we do provide for our Michigan Leadership Institute, and they're pretty extensive, superintendent's search is kind of our bread and butter. On that, you can see on the screen some of the things that we do. And I do want to highlight the second bullet there, Superintendent Preparation Series Academy. We have been annually for many, many years doing training for aspiring superintendents from throughout the state of Michigan. So every year, we have a cohort of anywhere from 35 to 45 people generally who wish to break into the superintendency. They could be principals, central office administrators. Every once in a while, we'll get somebody who has just attained a superintendency and they come anyway because they would like to learn as much as they can in order to be as effective as possible. So, part of what happens with that is we have the opportunity to establish relationships with a lot of folks who are out there and looking to become leaders in districts throughout the state. And we think that's a real advantage to us. We do provide executive coaching, board governance workshops, strategic planning, support for negotiations, succession planning with leadership, facility utilization studies, community forums. We've done that extensively and a lot of other types of professional development for boards and for leaders in education. So, you have the option, of course, to go with various firms and the question primarily is why us? Why would you go with Michigan Leadership Institute? So, I'll start by saying that I'm quite sure all the firms that you're talking to, all of us can provide the basic services that you're looking for. So, in a lot of cases, this is really, I think, more about fit and comfort level for you folks and who you think stands the best chance to help you find the person to come in and be the leader for your district for the next, into the foreseeable future, I would say. But for us, everything we do is basically grounded in what's best for kids. We don't lose sight of that. Everything we do is related to education. All of us in the organization are current or former educators and so that's what it comes down to. But we are really focused on building strong leadership. We have quite a track record of successful experience, which I think would be to your benefit. We believe we have the strongest reputation in the state for the quality of our search services. Our process, and of course, it's a matter of opinion, might have sharing mine. Our process is more robust, we think, than the others. The interviews are more in-depth and you'll find, in terms of consultant time onsite, and I would be the consultant working directly with you. We spend more time onsite with you than any other firm. I would be with you every single step of the way. We've been in operation since 1998, quite a long time. We successfully completed over that time nearly 400 superintendent searches. In terms of the expertise that we bring, we conduct ongoing research on the art and science of public leadership. As I mentioned, we facilitate the annual academies on leadership and preparation for aspiring superintendents. We do know too, part of our job through this process is to keep you out of trouble. And so, we know the requirements of FOIA, the Michigan Open Meetings Act, and part of my responsibility would be to help keep you on the straight and narrow and keep you from stepping into something inadvertently. And as I've mentioned before, our consultants are all educators, former superintendents. We're all experts in the field. Even though I would be the consultant working directly with you, our entire Michigan Leadership Institute team collaborates on all searches. So, if there's another consultant at another part of the state doing a search, for example, we typically communicate via phone and email. We look at the applicant field. We might recommend applicants to one another. If there's an applicant, for example, for this position who is working in the western part of the state, somebody I might not know too much about, I would then consult with our representative in that part of the state who may well be able to share information. So, we find that to be very beneficial. It really is a team approach. And I won't tell you how many decades, but our collective decades of highly successful service as superintendents. And in addition to the work we've done for MLI, for me, that's been since 2015. We've built relationships and made contacts and created quite a network throughout the state of Michigan that really comes into play at a time like this because it's not only about advertising for the position and posting for the position, it's about recruiting for the position, which is a really important part of this. This search will continue until you have an acceptable candidate. In the very unlikely and in our experience, very rare event, that we were to go through the entire search process and you were to feel like you had not yet found the right person for Wayne Westland Schools. I'm not going to come back at you and say, "Well, I'll go through another process for X amount of dollars. The job's not done yet." So, we would simply talk about our options at that point and talk about what we needed to do to continue and keep at it until we did find the right person. And I will tell you that you're better served to say, "We haven't found the right person yet," than simply to say, "We have to pick somebody, so we're going to pick one of the candidates that we have." Now, I'm going to tell you again, that's a rare, rare occurrence. It does not happen very often. I wouldn't expect that to happen here. I would expect that we would have a strong candidate field and we would find the right person for you the first time through. But know that in the event that we didn't, again, I'm stuck with you until the process is completed and you've found your person. If the appointed superintendent would choose to leave Wayne Westland within one year of the appointment for reasons other than personal health issues or family health issues, we would conduct another search on an expenses-only basis. So again, no additional fee, just whatever expenses for copying and just basic things like that would be. That would come into play. Again, that doesn't happen often. I would hope it wouldn't happen here. If it did, you would find me right back here working with you folks to go from there. If you were to choose to contract with us for quarterly governance workshops throughout the first year of the new superintendent's tenure, we would extend that guarantee to two years. We do, as part of the agreement that we enter into with you, if you were to choose us, we do conduct a new governance team workshop with you and the new superintendent at no additional cost. We consider the seven of you and the new superintendent to be the new eight-person governance team. And so, I would come back, no additional expense. And typically, that's three hours in an evening where we look at establishing operating norms, talk about roles and responsibilities and just make sure there's a comfort level there. And we establish good communication so that you all get off to a really good start, which is critical. In addition, I would be, and it would be me, the mentor for your new superintendent for the first year. He or she would be here in Wayne Westland. So, I would set up, I would offer to your new superintendent to set up formal meetings periodically, as much as once a month, where I would come in and sit down and meet with him or her. And I would remain accessible by phone, by email, et cetera, for anything that might come up throughout the course of the year. As I've said to people, if the new superintendent wanted to continue the relationship that extensively beyond, I would be willing to contract to continue. But I will say this, if it was just a periodic phone call, a question, a concern through email, I would never cut anybody off. So, the fact that we say we do that for a year, that's the extensive mentoring program. But I would certainly remain somebody who would be available and willing and able to help your new superintendent for beyond that first year. So, you have, I had left, I sent information to you previously. I left a folder in front of you and that may be a reproduction of what you already have, but I just wanted to be sure you had it in hand. So, I'm going to review some basic parts of our proposal. It includes three stages, planning and preparation, implementation, and then the final stage. So, in planning and preparation, if you were to select us, we would set up a meeting where I would come and sit down with you and we would go over all of the specifics of the search. We would establish the key expectation roles and responsibilities that you have throughout the process, as well as what I would have. We would customize the calendar for you. You see a sample calendar in your materials, but that's just a sample. In that meeting, we would go through it and kind of painstakingly map it out week by week and make sure that it's a schedule and a calendar that works and meets your needs. We talk about compensation and contract parameters, just kind of broadly because that becomes part of the posting too, and other details about the search. So, we lay the groundwork at that meeting for what's to come. I would consult with you at that time and also others to gather input regarding your leadership needs. So, this includes stakeholder forums. We conduct quite extensive stakeholder forums. I work with you to determine who are the people that you want me to work with. Typically, that includes staff members, community members, parents, even high school students to look at the qualities and characteristics that you're all looking for in a new superintendent who would be the right fit for Wayne Westland because it's not a one-size-fits-all proposition. As you know, we need to find somebody who meets your specific needs. And we also develop a district and community profile that we use as part of the posting. We do, if you desire, also provide an online survey where we give people the chance to give that type of input online as well. That gives you an opportunity to be that much more inclusive if you want to. But we do think the face-to-face meetings are important. We would certainly do those. We would add the online component if you requested it. Step three is we would work with you to develop that profile. So, I would take all that feedback that I got from you, from all of your stakeholders and through the survey and put that together to create that profile. Once I do that, I share that with you because you're the final arbiter that needs to meet your needs. So, you would have a chance to look at what I've developed, provide feedback. We could make tweaks to it and finalize that. And that would then become part of the posting that we would put out. Same with the community profile. We want to highlight the unique and appealing features of the district, as well as the surrounding region, to attract a strong candidate field. And develop and finalize the online position posting. And again, you would have an opportunity to view that entire posting, give me your feedback before it became finalized and before we put it out there for the world to see. Question?
John, you mentioned a calendar and you said, of course, it was subject to change.
Yes.
But I'm interested in seeing it because I'd like to know how much time you envision these various stages taking before we can fitfully perform it. Did you include that in this packet?
I believe it's there. If it's not there, I will provide it to you, but...
Would it be in the proposal?
Yes.
Document?
Yes, it should be. I'm going to look through. I think I have a copy here.
It's like this, if you're looking for a regular calendar.
Yeah, that's what I was going...
No, this is it.
Okay.
Found it?
I'm good. Thank you, Mrs. McDowell.
All right.
Thanks, John.
That's all right. And that's an example. It's good for you to be able to see that in advance and then we would talk specifically about how that would look. So, the implementation stage. Now, the posting is ready. We put it out there and off we go. This is when things really get interesting, although it gets a little bit quiet for you folks. Typically, that posting period's about five weeks. So, at that time, the applications are coming into our system. We have placed advertisements in online education sites. If you want us to, we can go to professional publications. We typically, very honestly, don't feel like that's necessary, required. But if that was something that you preferred, we could certainly do so. We would help you prepare a press release announcing that vacancy and detailing the process so that not only prospective candidates know about it, but that the public, your staff members, et cetera, your community knows about it as well. And we do make personal contacts. Again, this is not something that we should just leave to chance at all. In fact, it's interesting. I've already had a colleague reach out and said, "If MLI gets the Wayne Westland search, I've just talked to a prospective candidate that I think could be a good fit." Again, that's just how we work. We support one another in that way. So, we screen applicants and identify candidates for further consideration. In the first step, we don't do the full-blown reference checks because there's an expectation of confidentiality. But there are ways that we can check into people's background and learn as much about them as we can in the initial stages. We contact candidates who we think could potentially be selected by the board in advance just to make sure there's interest. I'll contact candidates sometimes who we may not know much about just to talk with them and learn a little bit more too, so that I can be that much well-informed when I share those with you. We conduct an orientation workshop to prepare you for what's to come. When we have then a meeting, once that application window closes, we've gotten all those applications and I will be privy to those. I don't send you updates during that time. Again, they have an expectation of confidentiality, so it does get quiet for you. And it can be a little bit nerve-wracking for a board when you're sitting for five weeks and things are all very still. Sometimes, the board president will call and say, "Just give me an indication, how's it going?" The board's a little bit antsy, so I can at least share just broadly a statement with the board. I can certainly do that. But then, after that, we get together. That's the only time in this process that you go behind closed doors. Everything else is and should be, per the Open Meetings Act, totally out in the open and transparent. But that's the one time due to confidentiality that we go behind closed doors, conduct a closed session. I will share at that time all of the applicants with you. I will typically group them for you, not for the purpose of making a selection for you. That is not my job. That is your job. But at that time, we'll go through every applicant. I'll tell you anything that I may know about them that goes beyond those applications, anything I've learned through doing background checks, through talking to colleagues, et cetera. But at that time, I will group them into basically three tiers. The top tier, the candidates who I think, in my opinion, most closely match the profile that you've developed and are the most highly qualified with the strongest experience. A bottom tier, I would say, kind of a third tier of candidates who, you know, they may be good people and have good experience, but who are furthest from your candidate profile and perhaps have the least experience and who I think may be the poorest fit. And then, kind of a middle tier, who may be somewhere in between. That's the one and only time that I weigh in in any way, shape, or form. But I stress with you now, and I will stress with you then in no uncertain terms, you call the shots and you're going to see all the applicants. You can pick any of the applicants from among any of those tiers as those that you want to interview for this position. I actually, in a recent search, had a candidate who was in the third tier, a really good candidate, but we had such a strong applicant field that, in my view, that candidate did not make the top two tiers. The board decided to include that candidate in the interview field. And lo and behold, that was the candidate that they selected to become their next superintendent. And from all appearances, I'm working with that candidate and worked with the board. Things seem to be going great. So, that's a case in point, right? I'm categorizing them for you just to be helpful. But ultimately, it's your responsibility and your choice to say, "Here are the people who we think we're most interested in learning more about." Remembering that you're not choosing your next superintendent at that time. You're just picking individuals who you want to learn more about, who you want to get a chance to talk to face-to-face. And then, you'll begin to go through that process of narrowing the field. At that time too, it's, we have dialogue, but I'll stress with you then too that you cannot make any selection in closed session. All you can do in closed session is review the applicants. You can ask questions about the applicants. What I'll encourage you to do is share your thinking out loud. But what you can't do is kind of poll one another. We won't, for example, go to candidate D, have one of you say, "Well, I think candidate D looks really strong." Suppose David says that and says, "Melanie, what do you think?" I'll stop you. You cannot do that. You can share your thoughts out loud, share your thinking so that your fellow board members hear that. But you cannot make any selection at all. So, when you come out of that discussion process, I will have either numbered or lettered the candidates. You'll have an opportunity to make a motion in open session, but you do it by letter or number so that you're not revealing the identity of the candidates. In the event that somebody makes a motion, for example, and it fails, you don't want to have, so to speak, outed those candidates until you have a successful motion. So, once you do and you've identified those candidates that you want to interview, immediately, that no longer is a source of confidentiality. We announce that publicly. That evening, before I leave here, I would be with you that evening, but before I left, I would sit down somewhere privately and I would start calling each of the candidates that you selected and immediately scheduling them per the schedule that we had set up for first-round interviews and slotting them into spots and getting them ready to come on in. Those interviews typically take place the next week, so we don't waste any time with that. I follow up by email with all of the other applicants who were not selected immediately to let them know that they were not selected, but to thank them for their interest and make sure that we handle that as professionally and graciously as we can as well. Sometimes, people will follow up with questions and I'll have further dialogue with them. As far as number goes, generally speaking, is anywhere from four to six candidates in that first-round field. But again, that kind of depends on how you feel about the applicant field. I had mentioned how robust our process is. Our first-round interviews, and I don't believe anybody else does this, we schedule 90 minutes for those. So, as you can imagine, 90 minutes per candidate. Sometimes, the candidates don't take the full 90, but there are times I have to cue the board president to let the applicant know that you're running out of time and we need to pick it up. So, 90 typically is just about right. If you want to break in between, now, what we're talking about is something over three hours just for two applicants. So, the one thing with us is that, let's suppose you have six applicants. You're not talking about three nights of interviews. And then, either at the end of that third night, we would go through a deliberation process or we would come back even for a fourth night to go through that process to narrow the field down. So, that takes a little bit longer than perhaps some other firms do. But we think, again, think about the nature of this decision, how critical this is. It's better to be as thorough as possible and take our time rather than rush in any way, shape, or form. Interview questions. That night too, before, I let you get away from me, I'll go through. We have a bank of standard interview questions for first-round interviews that I will share with you. You'll have an opportunity to select from among those that night. And you would also have an opportunity to say, "Well, we think it's important to ask a question about whatever the topic might be." Let's say, community relations and we don't see a question here that really fits as well as we'd like it to. So, can we add that question? Of course, we can. So, that would be your opportunity too, to personalize it with some questions if you needed to. When you come back for first-round interviews, I will have a packet of questions placed at your chairs for you. Make it as easy as you can. So, you'll have a separate set of interview questions in a binder for each of the applicants with plenty of room there to write notes. And it's spelled right out. So, it goes down to comments from the board president. It's a narrative, so David, you would just have to read right from that to make it really easy and direct. It gets right down to the exact question for each of the applicants and who's asking the question. So, for each interview, it follows the same format. So, the questions are asked in the same order and asked by the same person for each of those individuals. I will be at all the interviews. I'll provide guidance and support as needed then and again throughout the process. We provide feedback sheets for the audience. This is an important way for you to get your audience members and your community members involved. So, typically, somewhere back there on the counter, I would just have them for people to take. They have an opportunity to give some feedback based on what they saw and heard that night. We would collect them. We'd have Tamara or Cheryl or somebody would make copies of those for you and place those in your hands for you to take. So, each of you would get a set of all of the feedback forms you would get on each of the candidates. It gives you that much more information to consider on each. If you want to, we would accept and screen questions from the audience. I'll be honest, I typically recommend, and we typically recommend, that you don't do that because that gets you away from having kind of a level playing field for each of the applicants if you start to give them different questions from audience members. And it's just a bit of a wild card and it's a little bit risky. Even though I would screen the questions, if people did write out questions, I would take them first and screen them. But what also can happen too is if I see a question that I think is a little bit inappropriate, too personal, whatever the case might be, illegal, that could be a little bit contentious too. Sometimes, you have audience members that are not happy that their question was screened out. I just find it's more straightforward and a little bit more simple not to go there, but to provide that opportunity for feedback. Again, I do facilitate debriefing on the candidates, either on the evening of the last interview or we would come back another night to do so. And we would facilitate next steps discussions, which would include the next round of interviews. So, after the first-round interviews, you would typically narrow the field down, let's say, to two candidates generally. We would bring those candidates back the next week. You would do a follow-up interview. Typically, the follow-up interview with the board is 60 minutes versus 90 the second time. But, we schedule those on two separate nights. And let's say those interviews start at 6:30 like tonight's meeting did. So, it'd be an hour with you at 6:30. But backing that up, probably around noon or so, we would have those candidates come to the district and we would have set up then meetings for each of those candidates with key constituent groups. So, again, staff members, community members, parents, high school students, you're going to help me determine who are the people who you want those candidates to interact with. I'm there for those too, again, just to kind of keep things moving on time. We generally give the people participating, we give the candidate a chance to make brief, and I always say, "Brief." I tell them to keep it no more than five minutes, introductory remarks. But then, the people who are there get a chance to ask questions that they want. I'll coach them a little bit on what kind of questions they should avoid. They can't ask personal questions about religion, marital status, et cetera. So, I'll give them a little bit of coaching and if they step over the line, I'd let them know, "No, you can't ask that question." But generally, it goes really well. And again, we provide feedback forms there. And I literally there, rather than just placing forms there and inviting people to fill them out, I've put those forms in their hands and say, "The Board of Education would really appreciate it if you would take just a few minutes and provide your feedback on this interaction with the candidate." And I let them know, "This is your chance to have a voice in this selection process" because, again, now, we would put copies of those in your hand and these folks know that you, board members, will know what they have had to say and how they've reacted to the candidates. And it is an important bit of information for you to have as you're making this difficult decision. We recommend typically that you do a site visit the following week. Sometimes, based on who the finalists are and based on your schedules, it either becomes a little bit logistically tough to do or the board simply decides that it's not something that you desire to do. That's your choice. We think that there's something to be said for it. Naysayers will say sometimes, "It's just a dog and pony show" because the candidates themselves are responsible for gathering people together for no more than three board members who participate in the site visit to go and talk to. And the thought is, if the candidate's picking these people, well, of course, they're only going to pick people who are going to say nice things about them. And there is an element of truth to that. But I will tell you from firsthand experience, and I've heard this from other board members too, there have been times I've heard that that site visit makes all the difference in the world. In a recent search, I had the board actually say, with the two finalists, they were leaning one way until the site visit and that turned them. It's one thing to read letters of reference, et cetera. It's another thing to look people in the eye. And the board members present, again, I'll give you some guiding questions that you can ask, but you have the opportunity to ask whatever you'd like to. When you can see people's facial expressions, body language, and hear how they're answering questions, you can really read a lot into that. The enthusiasm with which and the emotion with which people talk about the candidate that you're asking them about will tell you a lot. And you've seen it and I've seen it, where somebody will say nice things about a candidate somewhat unemotionally versus I've seen and heard where people literally are tearing up and crying at the thought of losing this person because they love working with them and they've been such an asset to their district and they're going to hate to lose them. So, those personal interactions can make a big difference. And so, if you desire, that would be the last step in the process before you make that final decision. Again, I communicate with unsuccessful candidates. That night, the night of the meeting, again, I'm here. But typically, I don't have a lot to do that meeting. We would come back together. After the site visit, I should go back and say, "Just so you know." So, if three board... After the site visit, I should go back and say, "Just so you know," so if three board members are taking part of that, what I always say is, "You should pick three board members, number one, who could do both site visits so that there's consistency." And then, there should be a commitment on the three board members' parts that you will sit down after and you will do a joint summary of the site visits you're going to share with the other four board members so that everybody has the benefit of, even if it's secondhand, kind of getting that experience and knowing what the stakeholders in the home districts had to say. So, we look for three board members who'd be willing to do that. And sometimes, there's a little bit of disagreement. You could either capture that in the summary, or you could just find the common points that you do all agree on and share those.
John.
Yep.
So, if it's plural visits, you could do three board members for one visit and another three for the second visit?
You can. We recommend that it's the same three for both, only for consistency's sake. But I have had boards who say, "We would prefer to split it up to give more board members that firsthand opportunity." If you hire us, I remind you and myself, I'm working for you. So, if your preference is to do it that way, you call the shots, and if you tell me that's what you prefer to do, that's what you would do. So, the final night of when you bring that candidate back, really, you will have had kind of a treasure trove of data, and think about what you're going to have in your possession at that time. You're going to have the, all of the application materials from, at that point, each of those two finalists in hand. The AppleTrack application that they submit to the AppleTrack system, as well as a resume and a cover letter. Almost always, the candidates, when they come in for an interview, will hand you additional information that you're also going to have the benefit of reviewing. You're going to have your own notes from the first round interviews and the second round interviews that you can reflect on because the memory can play tricks, and that's helpful as well. You're going to have feedback forms from audience members from each of those first, those two rounds of interviews and from those stakeholder groups that precede the second round interviews. So, you're going to have a lot of stakeholder feedback as well to consider. And then, you're going to have the summary of what was provided in terms of those site visits. What I will also do is, once we're at a point where confidentiality is gone, I conduct more thorough reference checks. And when we get down to the finalists, I'll provide you with the summary of what I heard from references on both of those finalists. So, you think about that, that's an awful lot of data that you're going to have in your possession now when you're prepared to make this gigantic decision. So, at that time, again, I'm going to be here that night. I typically encourage the board president to be the one to call the successful candidate. Sometimes, boards like to do that out loud and put the candidate on speakerphone so everybody can hear it. That's kind of a nice touch, I think, but that's your call. I will go ahead and do the dirty work of calling the candidate who was not selected that same evening right away and let he or she know that they weren't selected. I can help mediate the employment agreement. We recommend typically with boards that you're better served to get your legal counsel involved in some way, shape, or form with that. But if I can be of assistance in that process and help mediate an agreement, I have done so and could certainly do so for you. Again, we provide that new governance team workshop as quickly as you would like to conduct that afterward, and I will be immediately begin working with your new superintendent to help provide coaching, mentoring, and support. So, sample search timeline. And we have talked about this, again, you've got to sample one in your packet, but this, I'll quickly run through this for you. So, week one, we have that opening meeting. Gather background, establish parameters at the search, agree on those timelines. It's typically a couple of weeks period where I get feedback from you and stakeholders on candidate characteristics and qualities that they'd like to see, as well as qualities and characteristics of your school district and community, and we'll develop that formal posting. Once that's ready to go and you've given final approval to the posting, we post it. Again, generally, five weeks. We place ads, do some recruiting, accept applications until four o'clock on the established deadline date, and again, we'll do some background checks. Week ten now, we're into, when we have that meeting where we all come together, go into closed session, I share the applicants with you, and you make your selection about who you want to interview. Weeks eleven and twelve, so right after we do the selection, week eleven, we'll do first round interviews. Week twelve, we do the second round interviews. Week thirteen, if you choose to, you conduct the site visits, and in week fourteen, you come back together, select the finalist. You would immediately enter into negotiations. That generally speaking goes pretty well, pretty quickly. And finally, once you do that, your new superintendent can give notice. And in this case, I'm quite sure what you're looking at is having the new superintendent come in and step in as of July first. And in terms of the timing of this, it will work actually very well for that purpose. As you sign your proposal, our fee for this is eighty-eight hundred dollars plus direct expenses, which include copying, mileage, et cetera, not to exceed eight hundred dollars. If you would want to modify what we do and the services that we provide in some way, we could talk about modifying the fee as well, but for everything that I just described, that's what it would take. As I say to people, sometimes it costs a little bit, but it certainly, when you consider the cost of not doing this the right way, I think it's well worth the cost. And just know, again, our commitment is to support the success of public education. Our motto is to develop, deploy, and support outstanding leaders in the state of Michigan, and we do all three of those, and we think we do those, since we've done them for a very long time, and we think we do those quite well, arguably, at least as well as, if not better than anyone else. So, it's a heck of a lot of information to throw at you in a very short time, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, John. We appreciate it, and we appreciate you being thorough with it. Members of the board, questions, comments? Mr. Buckaloo?
John, I have one request. You've had some experience with our district before.
I have.
For those who might not recall, would you remind us of what you've done with us in the past?
So, the first time I was here, I assisted with the strategic planning process, and that was somewhat like a search. My job is to facilitate the process, but not make decisions about what it is, what your goals will be and the strategies that you employ, et cetera. But my job was to come in and help put a process in place and lead you through that. A big part of that, much like a superintendent's search, is to go out and get feedback from stakeholders, which I did. And it's a large district, so those meetings were pretty extensive. I had a heck of a lot of meetings with your stakeholders, but it was really beneficial and it provided some really good feedback. So, the end result of that was a long-term strategic plan that was in place for your district. Second time I came back, you were into the ChoiceWorks process, I think that was the term you used, and you were looking at grade level reconfiguration. I was asked to come in as a follow-up. I presumably, I presumed, because the district was pleased with the work I'd done in strategic planning, to come in and facilitate the collection of data and feedback from stakeholders again to inform the process. So, I went out. The district provided me with some of the grade level configuration options that you were looking at. I put those out for stakeholders to see and walked them through a process of collecting feedback, put all that data together, gave it back to the district, and the district used all of that to help narrow down from the, I think it was six choices we started with, down to two, and then finally, down to the one that you decided to go with. So, both times, I spent, gosh, probably several months with you and interacted with a lot of staff members, a lot of community members, even some of your students, and with many of you as well. And I, again, as I said before, I enjoyed that opportunity both times and would certainly love to come back and assist you with this process. I know how critical this is, and without getting into it, I know how important it is that you get this right and that you don't fail. And I think you know from the work I've done with you before that I will communicate extensively with you. I'm very thorough, I'm very conscientious, and, you know, failure's just not an option. It can't be. So, we're going to do everything we can to help make sure that you have a successful search. And I will tell you this, that I'm confident. Our search, bear in mind, we've, again, we've been doing this twenty years, almost four hundred searches. So, we've made adjustments over the years as we've gone on. We have fine-tuned this to the point where if you folks work with me and we stick to that process, I'm so confident that you're going to have a strong candidate field, and within that candidate field, the right person to lead Wayne Westland Schools into the future will be among those candidates. And, you know, I'm not going to feel very good about it if that's not the case, but I'm not too concerned. I'm really optimistic that we would find the right person for Wayne Westland.
So, you have some understanding of the demographics of our district and some of our needs and so forth?
I do, although, yes, but what I would want to do when I sit down and talk to you folks is get some additional input from you. The more you can bring me kind of up to speed and up to date on that, then the better off, better prepared I'll be to help you find the right person. But because I've been here and because I'm from the area, I have a, you know, pretty good understanding, I think, of the nature of your district.
Mr. Cox, if you'll indulge me, I have a couple of questions.
Please.
So, you're going to do an in-service sort of, you called it an academy?
Yes.
And can that academy take a look at what we as a board are looking for in a superintendent? It might help us as a group of seven to have a somewhat clear picture of what it is we're looking for when we go out searching. Is that something you could include in that academy? A kind of a, take us through the process of coming to some consensus on what we're looking for?
So, it's, the academy you're talking about is, I think, a little bit different than what you're describing. That's, that takes place annually. Typically, it starts in August, it goes through November. It's kind of an intensive, two days in each of those months where there was thirty-five to forty-five aspiring superintendents come together.
Is there some point where you can facilitate us coming to consensus?
Oh, I see what you're saying, absolutely. In fact, so part of, part of the process is to come together and get your feedback on what it is that you're looking for. I'm going to add to that what all of your stakeholders say that they're looking for and what they think is critical in terms of those qualities and characteristics. My job is going to be to put all of that together and see what kind of stands out from talking to everybody and share that back with you. Now, typically, we don't come back together with that. I'll go ahead and take a shot at putting it together and have it be reflective of what I heard from you and your stakeholders. You have a chance to give feedback. I will say this, if you were to say, "Boy, we really need to come back together and talk about this rather than just give feedback on what I've submitted in writing," of course, I'd be willing to do that. So, at any point in this process, if you need additional support in that way, for example, the most important thing is that we get it right. So, I would absolutely be happy to come and help you with that.
My final question has to do with the role of vetting the candidate. You mentioned that you would be examining credentials as we got further into the process. Is there any role, and if so, what might the role of the board be in duplicating what you're doing or working with you in that process?
That's a, that's a great question. So, here's what's going to happen. Realistically, you're going to get lots of help vetting candidates whether you like it or not. So, in other words, once it becomes, once that candidate field becomes known, once we announce to the public, here are, let's say, the six people we've chosen to interview from among twenty-five applicants, whatever it might be. What will happen is immediately, community members, staff members, others are going to start doing their own Google searches. If they know anybody from the districts that they see these people come from, they're going to be making contacts. Quite often, your union leadership will contact union leaderships from those, other union leaders from those districts, and they'll find out what they can. And they, from my experience, I don't know what you've experienced recently, but they're not shy about telling you what they have heard and sharing if they have concerns. If you as board members, you don't need to go through and do any kind of a full-blown reference check, but, I mean, certainly, if you know colleagues, for example, if you chose to interview somebody from, gosh, I don't know, I'll pick my old, my most recent district, the Waterford School District, right? So, suppose somebody from Waterford applied, and you happen to have a relationship or just even a casual acquaintance with a Waterford board member, and you wanted to make a phone call to see what they might want to share with you? Sure, of course, you could do that. I would, I encourage you not to feel obliged to go through kind of the full-blown process that I go through on your behalf, but why not do those things? It behooves you to learn anything and everything you can. I will caution you about this, though. You will hear some things sometimes that are just the rumor, their innuendo, and they may be false. I'm going to give you an example again from a recent search where one of the applicants, and again, just what I just described, the interview field was announced, and immediately a rumor popped about one of the applicants that the applicant had done something, was dismissed from his previous district due to malfeasance. I won't get into what the alleged malfeasance was, it's not important. So, I tracked down the person who is currently an educator, was the superintendent of that district at that time, and I said, "Here's what I'm hearing. What can you tell me about that?" She laughed first, and she said, "It's absolutely unequivocally totally made up. There's no truth to it whatsoever." I was then able to go back to the district and reassure the board and to say, "There's nothing to it, so that's not a concern." As it turned out, that candidate wasn't selected, but that shouldn't have been, ended up not being a factor to consider. So, whereas, again, you're going to hear from people, and you might even reach out to people that you know for information, just, we also want to be cautious, and what I encourage boards to do is if you hear something that causes you to be concerned about one of the candidates, by all means, share that with me so I can do exactly what I did in the example I just gave you, and I can go back and do some more digging. If there is something to it, you need to know that, but you also need to know at that point if there's not, and that it's a rumor that's being spread and that's unfair, unfairly disparaging a candidate at that point.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Weaver?
Yeah, John. In times past, our superintendent searches have, as far as I'm concerned, been quite constrictive. It's almost like going to an eye doctor, "Is your sight better on one or two?" This kind of thing. And I just want this, this search to be conducted fairly among us board members. And, and also to... The question is, how would your company deal with us in terms of, in terms of, when we come down to it, you know, are you going to throw a rubric at us and ask us to do this, or are we going to be able to sit down and talk this out? That's my question.
Okay, I got you. So, you're going to be able to... The parameter that I put on you, and it's a fair question, and it's important you know this upfront, and I want to be honest with you. What I always tell boards is that we, when you talk about candidates, when you're narrowing the field, when you're either talking about the candidates that you want to bring into interview, when we go through a process of narrowing the field from, let's say, six to two, and then again, when you're making your selection, I urge you to keep it to a strength-based discussion, meaning that these are people who are putting their reputations on the line, and we don't want to get into a situation where we have board members who are being openly and publicly critical of the people who are in the field. That's not to say, again, you can't give feedback, but what you can say, for example, and there's ways that you can go about making distinctions and making comparisons. It's certainly fair, let's say you get down to two finalists, and it's certainly fair to say, "I favor this candidate. You know, here are the strengths that I see, and by comparison, I think because this person has more extensive experience at the central administrative level." Right? So, you're making a comparison, you're not trashing the other person, but you're making that distinction between the two. Excuse me. You can say, "I think that the person's experience has been in districts that are more like to Wayne Westland, and therefore, I think that person is better suited to come here and be able to be successful." So, you're able to kind of go through that kind of a process and go through that, but I do urge you strongly not to get into, "I don't favor this candidate because I don't think he or she is qualified, I don't think he or she is up to the job," whatever the case might be. But you would have an opportunity to at least have that level of dialogue. Now, typically, when you come back for that last selection, when you're going from the last two down to one, it goes through the process that you follow and so many other decisions that you make as a board, where somebody will make a motion to put one of the two forward, and then it's opened up for, after it's seconded, for discussion. And then, you can have that level of discussion and ultimately take the vote. It does happen sometimes, Fred, and you know it, that boards are made up of seven individuals, and it may well be that you get to the end and there's going to be disagreement. All we ask for at that time is it's respectful disagreement, and ultimately, if a majority of the board feels strongly that you've got the right person, that's who... that's who we'll move forward with. I give boards the opportunity at that point to have somebody make a motion to support the selection that was just made. So, I'll give you this example. Suppose five of your fellow board members vote to choose one of the two finalists, you're one of the no votes. I'll kind of coach you in advance, but you would have the opportunity then to make a motion to say, I want to make a motion to kind of publicly support the choice that's been made by the board. It could be seconded hopefully by the other no vote. And that would give the board a chance and a unanimous vote to throw its support behind the candidate, even if that person wasn't your first choice, but that's a nice way to immediately say, we're going to work together as a board, we're going to support our new superintendent, and we're going to do this together.
All right. My second question is that although our district is shrinking somewhat, I would make the assumption that candidates that we get would be people who have governed districts in correlation with our size.
I wouldn't make that assumption, I'll be honest with you. What you're going to get, and part of the job posting is going to be just some really basic qualifications, too. For example, one of the qualifications might be master's degree required, higher degree preferred. I like using that kind of language because in the application process, you're better served not being overly restrictive because you have a chance to vet these people. So, let's say your personal preference is you would get somebody who minimally has an education specialist degree or even a doctorate degree, right? And, but the application has said, but you can apply if you have a master's degree. Well, you have the opportunity when you review the applicants to say, boy, looking at this person, I only see the master's degree and I don't think everything else that I see supports moving the candidate forward. But you could also say, person only has a master's degree, but boy, this is great experience, I think this person looks like he or she could be a really good fit. I'd like to learn more about them. Again, at that stage, you're not picking the person. But it gives you a chance to be that much more inclusive at first if you're not overly restrictive. I will say this, too, it's more about finding the person who has the wherewithal to be successful versus somebody who's had comparable experience. And you want to be careful, I think, not to be overly limiting by saying it either has to be somebody who's worked in a district where that district has had the same demographics or similar as Wayne Westland, the same size or similar. I'm going to give you this personal example, if this helps. My first superintendency was in the Marysville School District. We had twenty-seven hundred students and five schools. I then applied to be superintendent of the Waterford School District. They had eleven thousand students and twenty schools. And I remember one of the questions the board asked me was, how are you going to make that transition from such a small district to a large district? And in part, my answer was, and I think it proved to be true, everything that I did in that small district, I would, is transferable here. In fact, even more so, when you're in a smaller district, you wear so many hats that you become good at a lot of things. So, not only do you have to perform all of the same functions you do in a larger district as superintendent, but you also may be doing human resources, you also may be doing curriculum, you also may be doing special education. Or if you're not directly responsible for those things, you have a much more involved role in those things than you do in a larger district where you have a much larger staff to conduct those operations for you. So you could almost argue that, you know, that a person from a smaller district sometimes has the advantage of having had more direct experience with some of the nuts and bolts of running a school district than somebody from a larger one. So, in my opinion, I think you keep the door pretty wide open initially, you create that candidate profile, you have some basic qualifications that are not too restrictive, and then you simply see what you get. And from that group of applicants, you can then pick and choose the people who you think potentially are going to be the best fit. And then we go through that process that I described as starting to narrow it down to ultimately find that person who you're highly confident is the right one.
Thank you.
Sure.
Members of the board, we have five minutes left with Mr. Silvery this evening.
I'd like to make a comment.
Hold on, Mr. Ne, I just recognized Mr. Ne.
Oh, okay.
Along the lines of vetting, again, do you take advantage of social media to vet your candidates as well?
Take advantage of social media. Those are some of the things we do early on in the process where we really can't do full-blown reference searches yet because confidentiality comes into play. So we do that initially. Secondly, once the candidates are no longer, there's no longer confidentiality involved. We do reference checks, but, and we get kind of more aggressive as we go along, but we never just call the references the candidates list in their applications. We'd be foolish to do that because there is a presumption that they're going to list people who are sure to say nice things about them. So, we dig quite a bit deeper and, and by the way, you even look for small things like that and I'll help guide you with that. If somebody in the references they've listed, for example, if it's somebody who's a central office administrator and they haven't listed their superintendent as a reference, isn't that interesting? And why might that be? And so that's something that we want to pay attention to as well. But certainly, even if you chose to advance that person, I'm talking to that superintendent because the person didn't list him as a reference, we still need to hear from him or her. But we are as extensive in including social media as we can be.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. I was really, really excited at your proposals when you helped us with our strategic plan and even with the great reconfiguration, everything went smoothly. And honestly, your organization did help us to be successful because our bond pass, everything, you know, with our strategic plan is in order. So I'm really impressed by your institute and what you've done for our district.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, John. Frankly, my colleagues have asked some questions that I wanted to delve into a little bit more. Mr. Buckleloo specifically, talking about the new governance team workshop. This is a, obviously, you're familiar with Wayne Westland, you've worked with us before.
Yes.
You've talked with colleagues about if you're selected to be the search firm, we have someone who might be interested in that position.
Yes.
So no doubt there is some conversation occurring out in the education world relative to Wayne Westland and what we've been dealing with for the past year.
There is.
Based upon your knowledge of that, how does that change your approach to this, to the task of finding us a superintendent? And how are you going to familiarize yourself with that? And we always consider that we're a special place, maybe most districts feel that way about themselves, but we feel as though, Wayne Westland is a diverse community, we're a large community, and we have needs that every school district in Western Wayne County doesn't have. And it presents a different profile to someone who would be the administrator. And not everybody is a perfect fit.
No.
So, how does your knowledge of what has gone on here and what we've experienced and some of the challenges we've dealt with affect how you would approach this task?
I think where that's most likely to come into play, and I'll be totally honest with you, given what has occurred, that could have a little bit of a chilling effect on applications. It could prompt people to potentially want to shy away a little bit. Part of my job is going to be to reach out, recruit, reassure, promote the district. And, you know, I tend to, I'm a glass-heffful kind of a person. So what I can honestly share is that I have quite a bit of experience working in the district. There are a lot of great people here, both on the board, in administration, on the staff, in the community. Bit of a sleeping giant with an opportunity to really make big leaps forward with the right type of leadership. And what a great opportunity for somebody who, again, has the wherewithal and the requisite experience to come in here and do some amazing things that you just don't have the opportunity perhaps to do elsewhere in a different situation. So, that's part of my job is to make sure that I go out there and ensure that people don't kind of read into what has occurred and think that this is not a district where I can be successful because I don't believe that. I believe it certainly is. So, it's my responsibility to help make sure that others know that.
Thank you, John. Is there any other comments you have?
Just as I said before, I have really enjoyed the time I've spent with you folks and people throughout your district before. I was excited to have this opportunity to come and present. I'd be really excited to have you select us and have the chance to come and work with you once again. But I know it's a big decision, you're going to end up doing what you believe to be in the best interest of your district. I'll respect that whichever way you go. But hopefully, the next time I'm sitting and talking with you is in that first meeting as we prepare to undergo the search.
Well, I won't pull any punches, I'll just say that I feel very grateful that we have a individual of your caliber to talk with about this and a company such as Michigan Leadership Institute willing to help us with this. And I think that's a great step in the right direction. And we're very grateful for that. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you as well. Good to see you, folks.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to stand in recess. We have a presentation coming up from another organization. We're going to be in recess until we can set up in preparation for that. We recess for ten minutes. Thanks for the invite, Mark, if I didn't say so.
All right, well, yeah. My car grabbed my phone, I brought it.
On your way out, Mark, you didn't do anything on your phone, did you? Was that this?
I might have this time. No, in other words, I didn't answer any, I didn't get an email that prompted it. I called to Mary because I didn't have this meeting on my calendar and in my mind, I thought.
You know?
Oh, yeah, so on my phone.
You're welcome.
All I did was just add it in my calendar, like I do a zillion other things that don't send out pictures. So, something with that, you know, when you start to fill out your calendar, it gives you options of previous things that you've done.
I hit words, but.
Well, mine, I start to, I put in special meeting and it gave me about three choices because I do other things.
Auto fields?
Yeah, auto, well, not the calendar itself, it gave me auto choices, I like.
I have an Apple phone, so, but I don't.
Yeah, me too.
So when you said that, I'm saying that to say we could look at it together.
Yeah.
But I don't use my phone calendar to set up anything. I go straight to the computer just for that purpose because I don't want it sending out other stuff that, yeah, I don't want it sending out something that I'm not intending for it to go out.
It is a clue, though, because I use my phone all the time for putting things in my calendar. It does send out invitations until I put that one in, the special meeting.
This is the calendar I'm using, it's got the right timestamp.
You got an Apple phone, too?
I do have an Apple, but this is not the school district calendar. This is just one of my.
That's your personal calendar?
Yeah, my wife has there.
I don't know if, if it's going to say something different. But I, as like you, I don't have, I have my personal one on my phone, not on, not the school district one.
You are more than welcome to set up at the podium.
At the podium, okay.
And it looks like she has your.
Have slides over your computer, yeah. And do I have a clicker up there?
Yep, it should be up there, so let's check it out.
I'll practice, yeah.
Yep, there's a clicker up here.
Wait, everybody, is that important?
We have all but one person.
This is Walker isn't here. She lost her grandmother a couple of days ago.
I'm sorry?
I think that has something to do with it.
Walker lost her grandmother.
Oh, I see.
I'm going to click the copy of this with her paperboard.
Okay, great, thank you.
Big difference between temperature.
I'm coming back for coffee.
Tom says it's not that great, but at least it's hot.
I'm grateful to have it.
Can use it as a hand warm.
About ready to put my coat back on.
Yeah, it's a little chilly, well, it gets that way.
There's a big difference between this room and the reception area.
Mark, I'm Carl, what's up?
Hello, Carl.
Nice to meet you.
Ten and a half.
Aren't you cold?
I'm freezing, I'm scared to turn in.
I just said that, I already know you're.
I want to turn on my heater, but I don't want to blow a fuse, so I didn't plug up the heater. It's like, this is not a time to blow a heater, so I didn't plug it in.
No more fuses, they're not breakers.
No, but can you tell them it's freezing?
They know, I just told them.
Everybody knows we're freezing. So how are things at Wayne State, Carl?
Good, good. I don't know people going in to teach, but it's happening everywhere.
Can you hardly blame them?
Yeah. I wish we could do better, I really do.
I'll tell you where our priorities are.
Yeah.
It never was a occupation to strike rich, but.
No, but you have respect.
True. At least you were able to pay off your college loans at a halfway decent time. Now.
Without making someone a billionaire first, or a billionaire first, I should say.
I don't know how kids do in all this. Mine's teaching high school science in South Carolina.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. She got tired of the lake effect snow of Michigan.
That's a low paying state.
Yeah, ten thousand dollars less just to start with.
They're one of the long time right to work.
But they had a big rally in the fall, message received, you know, you're not, they have to come up here to recruit, because they're not producing, and never have produced enough.
Really?
Yeah, that's what I'd say. Carl, how do you pronounce your last name, Weiss?
Weiss.
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 I had a short argument with someone about that today.
Well, my dad went, my dad went through World War II as a Weiss, so, we're used to that.
Thank you to your dad.
The Germans always pronounce, when it's E and I, they pronounce the second one.
That's right.
Thank you, Air Neil, originally German. So, it's Weiss.
Are you ready to roll?
Ladies and gentlemen, we are reconvened from our ten minute recess, and I would like to introduce and welcome Mr. Carl Weiss from Metro Bureau, Metro Detroit Bureau of School Studies, who will make a presentation to us this evening regarding our superintendent's search process. So, Carl, I'd like to hand the meeting over to you, welcome, and thank you for being here tonight.
And thank you, President Cox, and thanks to all of you for the opportunity. The Metro Bureau has worked with Wayne Westland for many, many years, long before my tenure at the Metro Bureau, and you're an important district in your own community, and you're a very important district to us as well. So, we appreciate the opportunity to present our services. I know you've heard from two other search firms that are, you know, widely recognized in our state as well, and I know that you have probably heard the procedures and the processes, and so, I'm going to begin by telling you that we're just a little bit different from the other firms, we don't do nearly as many searches, we only do superintendent searches for our member districts, and we're a nonprofit organization, we live at Wayne State University. We were formed in the nineteen forties as a way for school district leaders to communicate with other leaders in other school districts, because that wasn't happening then, just like it doesn't happen enough now. But in the forties, in the days of carbon paper and typewriters, and still never being able to get somebody on the telephone when you really needed them, the Metro Bureau was a way for leaders to meet and collaborate and strategize on being better at what we do, and our focus has been and will always be, it's about the kids. We like to say our mission statement is that we help school administrators to become great leaders. You've seen some attrition, as have most school districts in Wayne County, in terms of your district leadership, superintendents and directors and assistant superintendents have been retiring, coming and going. Sometimes on Monday, you're a building principal, by Wednesday, you're a central office leader, and by Saturday or Sunday, you're the next superintendent in the district, it seems to happen very fast. Yet, there's no book to read that prepares you for all this, it's about networks, and it's about collaboration with other people, and you learn who the smart people are, and you learn who you can ask questions to and who will listen. And that's, that's how you survive, and that's how you thrive as a school district leader today, and at the Metro Bureau, that's what we help people do, we have regular monthly meetings and seminars that involve superintendents, assistant superintendents, first line administrators in curriculum instruction, and also finance. So, we help them to build those networks, that's our mission. About two thousand and eight, we started doing superintendent searches, and we did that as kind of a return on investment for our member districts, we're a nonprofit, but Wayne Westland, like all of our members, pays a small membership fee every year, and we believe that we have a lot of human resources experience in our organization, and I'll tell you a little bit about our staff in a minute, but we started doing superintendent searches as a way to offer a return, and because we work with so many district administrators in our area, we know a lot of people who are superintendents, we know a lot of people who want to be superintendents, and so, we know a little bit about the candidates, because the Metro Bureau was formed specifically for school districts in the metropolitan Detroit region, we know the area, we know the market, we have no aspirations to be a statewide organization, we work for the eighty-two school districts in our region, in Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County primarily, and because we are a membership organization, I'm proud to say that of those eighty-two, seventy-eight of them are members of our organization, and come to our events and participate in our workshops and seminars. But really, we're all about the kids, the better we can prepare our administrators, the better kids will learn in your district and every other district. So, I now want to tell you a little bit about our team at the Metro Bureau, as you may or may not know, I'll start with me, because I'm here, I'm Carl Weiss, I've been the executive director of the Metro Bureau for the past seven years. Prior to that, I was a lifer in public education, all in Michigan, although I'm not from Michigan. I graduated in nineteen seventy-eight from University of Michigan, and I fell in love with the state, and I've been here ever since. I spent my first twenty-three years as a teacher and administrator, working for LaPierre Community Schools up in LaPierre County, and then I decided I would add some drama to my life, and I came down to Wayne County as an assistant superintendent, first in Dearborn Heights Seven, I stayed there for five years, and then, my last seven years, I served as a superintendent for Your Neighbors to the South in Romulus. And so, I retired from that job to take the executive director role at the Metro Bureau. My partners at the Metro Bureau are all also experienced retired superintendents. Dr. Sue Carnell, who I think you all know, and have grown to like, from what I've been told, did a tenure here as an interim for you, and I believe she's mentoring Jill Simmons, your current superintendent, your current interim superintendent, Sue has worked a majority of her career in Wayne County, she spent her last years as superintendent in Westwood Schools. Dr. Greg Berisi, who also works with us at the Metro Bureau, who all of you are know, from his very long tenure here at Wayne Westland Schools, and then also Dr. Nancy Campbell, who you may never have met. Nancy Campbell came from Oakland County, she spent most of her career in Oakland County, finished out her last six years as a superintendent in Macomb County for Romeo Community Schools. So, between the four of us, we've worked in every county in our region, we know districts, and we know people, and we have very strong networks. So, with that said, with the introductions, and a little bit of information about our organization, I'd like to roll into the process, and really, this slide kind of tells it all, it's about the fit. Anybody can find you a superintendent, most search firms can find you a good one, but what is just as important as finding a good one, is one that's a good fit for your district, all right? Whether, whether your, your goals for the next superintendent are to throw everything out and start fresh, or just to keep the train running, and keep it on the tracks, all right? Our job as a superintendent search firm is to find out what your goals are, our job is to listen, our job is to listen to every single board member, engage all of you in conversation, find out what's important to you, what traits you're looking for in your next superintendent, and then our job is to get to know your community, and find out what's on their mind. Amazing things come from community meetings, and we believe that that's a very strong part of this program. But again, we can find a good superintendent for you, that's not hard. Finding the right fit for the district, in terms of where the district is right now, and what the needs are, that's where you come in, you help us connect with those needs for your district, because I know a little bit about Wayne Westland, but I don't know as much as you do, and some of you have been on the board for a very long time, and have a nice history here, and I know some of you have worked as teachers in the district, so you go back way, way farther than just your board experience. So, finding out from you what's important, and what works in this community, I always thought of Romulus as a smaller version of Wayne Westland when I was there, we have a lot of the same missions, so I feel like I can relate to a lot of the challenges, and a lot of the successes that you've experienced over the years, but I'm not the expert that you are, so we come to listen, we come to engage, and we also come to work with the board as a whole to build consensus around the type of individual that we're looking for, so that we can recognize that individual, and so that we also have the courage to say that if, the first time around, we don't find that individual, then rather than compromise our standards and make a weak hire, we'll be the first ones to tell you, let's go back to the well, let's put an interim in, let's keep treading water for a little while, because we didn't get the pool that we wanted, all right? We're not going to force anybody down your throat, because we know that that won't end well for anybody. So, it's about working with the board and the community, and listening, and matching the leadership traits with the skills and experience that you're looking for, in terms of your next leader. Now, the challenge is getting those leaders to come here and interview. Have you thought about some things that will attract people to your district? Because I know, I think, have all of you been through the search process before, while I was on the board the last time?
Everyone except for Mr. Neal, who's new to the board.
Okay, so you've been through this before. There are procedures, but our first goal in terms of recruitment is to attract the right people. And so, probably the most important thing we do early on is we have a study session with the Board of Education, where we talk about the profile of the ideal candidate, and we do a roundtable discussion, we want to hear from every single board member, what kinds of things they value. We come to the table with a template of what we think is like motherhood and apple pie, in terms of superintendents, but we want to listen to you, and we want to hear what's important to you, and through that conversation, and through listening to everybody, and unpacking the thoughts that everybody has, we develop a very strong profile of what everybody's looking for, and we help the board come to consensus around that profile. We use that to create kind of a brochure to market the vacancy. That brochure gets advertised at places all around the state, and certainly around our region, and if you prefer to have a national advertisement, there are ways to do that as well. One of the nice things about the electronic media is, it really doesn't cost anything to advertise this wherever we want. We normally post at our state superintendents on that website, at the state school board association's website, we post at the local and regional universities and community colleges as well, as, and we also post with the regional intermediate school districts in our area. If you'd like to go a little bit farther, and post in Ohio, in Illinois, we can. What history, recent history in particular, in the last ten years tells me is that people from out of state are not pining to come to Michigan to work as school superintendents, the way they once were. That market has changed quite a bit, for reasons beyond our control, and, and I'm here to tell you that probably your best candidates, not all, but most of your best candidates are going to come from within Michigan. Many of them may come from Wayne County, there are good, strong leaders in Wayne County who are looking for a district like Wayne Westland, as kind of a pinnacle to their career. Maybe they started in a smaller district, maybe they're looking for a little bigger job. This district has a lot of challenges, but it's also very rewarding and satisfying to work in a district that has the needy population that you have, the diversity that you have, and the community spirit that you have. You have a lot of strengths in this community, I know you've been through some turmoil and some trauma recently, but this is a strong community. I always looked over my shoulder at Wayne Westland, like I look over my shoulder at Dearborn, and Taylor, and Plymouth Canton, the other districts around me when I was a superintendent. You have a lot of, a lot of strengths and a lot of attributes, so we have to market those, and we have to focus on the positivity in the district, and the community things, the scholarships that you give away, the community support that you have, the vocational program that you have, you have a lot of great assets. So, that first study session with the board, we build that profile, again, we come to you with kind of a template, based on your input, we tweak that, we then share a draft, and we try to get that turned around very quickly, because I, I suspect that your goal is to have a new superintendent seated by no later than July one. So, we have to get on board, just like there's a deer hunting season, there's a superintendent hunting season, and it starts usually in December or January, so I know you're probably anxious to get the ball rolling, we would aspire to meet those needs and those timeline demands as well. So, the other thing that we try to do with that very first study session is create a timeline for the board. Trying to get seven people together for meetings is not the easiest thing in the world, so, we like to begin that timeline with the hire date, begin with the end in mind, in other words, and we work backwards on that. So, if we're going to hire for July first, that means interviews have to take place sometime before that, that means there has to be a posting, and normally, for a posting of a position like superintendent, you would want between four and six weeks' time to post that position and let it run. We can compress that, we've done them, we did a search in Garden City about five years ago, and I'm happy to report that superintendent is still there and doing well, we did that in five weeks. We got a very late start, but the board committed all of their energy, and I promised if all the puzzle pieces fell together the right way, we could do it, and they did, and we did. But normally, four to six weeks is the norm, and I think you have that, that much time. So, we create that timeline, within that timeline, there's a couple of board study sessions, there's also interview sessions, there's also a few community meetings, this is a big community, you have a lot of stakeholders in this community who are very supportive of the school district, we don't want to leave anybody out. The only people that select the next superintendent are the board members of this community, but you want that decision to be informed by as many stakeholders as we can involve in the process. So, we work with you on community meetings, that can be as simple as one meeting, and, or it can be several meetings. We can do those at different times of the day, to accommodate the needs of the community. You know what you're used to, you know what people will come to, we use that meeting for two reasons. One is to kind of give an overview of the process, so that everybody in the community who wants to can understand how this will go, and what the deadlines are, and when the interviews are going to be, and so that we can learn from the community, what they want to see in their next school district leader as well. We also do an electronic survey, it's a very simple survey, it's one open-ended question, it goes something like this, what would you like the board to know about your priorities for their next superintendent? We take that, the last search we did was in Romeo, up in Macomb County, we had about three hundred responses to the survey, I would imagine, this district is about twice the size of Romeo, and I would imagine we would get at least twice as many responses, how do you make sense out of all those responses? Well, what we do is, we very carefully read through all those responses, and we sort them into categories. Categories like leadership, like change agent, some people are looking for a change agent, some people are looking for a very student-centered leader, some people are looking for a very teacher-centered leader. Some people are looking for an academic with very strong credentials. And I know that many people are looking for a superintendent in Wayne Westland, who knows the needs of the district. So, what we try to do is we build that profile, so that those people will be interested in this position, so that those people will apply. I mentioned that between my team and I, we pretty much know people in every school district in this region. Before I retired, I was very active in our state superintendent's organization, I was on the Massa Council. I was on the Massa Council. I was also the Secretary Treasurer of the Tri-County Alliance in our region, and I was a past president of the Middle Cities Education Association as well. So I'm still pretty networked, and this job at the Metro Bureau allows me to get networked well at all of our events around the state because all of our districts go to those events. So we kind of cast a broad net when we do a superintendent's search. We reach out to as many groups as possible and we attract people. People call us. People trust us. I like to believe that we operate with a high level of integrity and honesty, and we won't try to do a snow job on any candidates. We try to tell them realistically what the challenges and what the needs are and what the expectations of the board will be if they were to get that job. We also work with our candidates throughout the process, all right? So first of all, that recruitment, that posting window, it's attracting people to this. We will field phone calls, we'll get emails. People want to know things about, they want to know how the board gets along, they want to know how the district's budget is getting along. They also want to know if there's a strong internal candidate or if there isn't. And I suspect that you're going through this process interviewing three different search firms because although you may have a strong internal candidate, I think you probably consider it your job to kind of search the world over to make sure that you've brought the best possible candidates to the district to interview with the Board of Education. And if there's a strong internal and they rise to the top of the pile, so be it, but then you can demonstrate to your community that you've done your due diligence as board members. So any questions about recruitment?
So the board questions at this point? Thank you, Neil.
Okay. Well, I will go ahead and roll into the next section, which is selection, all right? So I mentioned that the posting window is usually four to six weeks. During that time, we're receiving credentials from people, applications, and usually we get resumes and cover letters and also references, letters of reference, and we're going through those as they come in. Again, I have a team that works with us. We all have different tasks in this. As the Executive Director of the Metro Bureau, I'm the person that you would see the most. I'll be at every meeting with the Board of Education, and I will be the one that's guiding you through this process, but you will see other members of our staff. Most of the time, they'll be working behind the scenes. We believe in a multi-tiered process for selection. So we begin with a paper screening. We look through the credentials and identify candidates that are aligning with the requirements in terms of education. You may want someone with a doctoral degree. That may not matter to you. You may want someone from a school district that has a similar demographic to Wayne Westland Community Schools, or that may not matter. All of those things will help us to sort through those piles of paper even though they're submitted electronically. I still call them paper screening. Anyway, we look through those and we will try to cull that field to maybe a dozen or 15 of people that meet the criteria, that have the credentials, that have the background and the experience. You may only be interested in those that have superintendent experience. That's your prerogative as a board. There are pros and cons to that, and it's my job to explain those pros and cons to you when we get to that point. We will take those candidates and then we do a phone screening interview with them. We have 13 questions, and I have to tell you, part of my background in human resources, I was trained by the Gallup Organization in something called an educator-perceiver, and I was also trained by Ventures for Excellence, similar process. I learned a lot during those trainings that helped me to interview and hire good people when I was in the business of hiring teachers and also when I was in the business of hiring administrators. And I use those, many of those skills in the work as a superintendent's search consultant as well. So we have these questions that we've crafted as a group that we ask. They're open-ended questions. We listen for the responses of the candidates, and we have our own little rating system. As we're listening, their responses are telling us about their leadership experience, all the things that you've heard in interviews before, but we're also assessing them for their leadership capacity. There are seven leadership traits that we look for when we're doing this. We look for integrity. Everything begins and ends with integrity. If you have a superintendent that you can't trust, nothing else really matters, does it? If the community doesn't trust the superintendent, nothing else really matters. Integrity is the beginning and the end, all right? There's courage. We know that you have to have courage to be in education today. There's passion. Are they passionate about what they do? There's vision. Do they have a vision for what the district should look like, not only now but five years down the road? Does it align with the board's vision and the board's mission? Judgment. Are they capable of making good decisions? Can they tell us about a bad decision that they've made and what they learned from it? Because we've all made bad decisions before. And then finally, empathy. Empathy is internally focused. It's my ability to feel what other people are feeling. And then kind of the opposite of empathy, the last trait we look at, is emotional intelligence. That's my ability to perceive how other people view me, all right? As we're listening to their responses to those phone questions, we're kind of rating them, all right? Because the next step before interviews is to have another board session where we meet with you. Normally, it's in a closed session, and we do follow the Open Meetings Act, but we do it in a way that it's legal and proper to meet in a closed session where we can talk frankly about our recommendations for interview candidates. Some boards like to be more involved. If you're a board that likes to read every single application, I'm not going to stop you. It's going to be time-consuming, I will tell you that because, you know, you're probably going to be reading 20 to 30 applications. But if you trust us and our experience to kind of narrow that field, what we will do is we will come to you with probably about a dozen candidates that we feel are worth talking about. And we'll help you narrow that field down to usually six to eight for interviews. Again, based on their leadership abilities, based on their experience and their knowledge, and based on their fit with what you're looking for. We do that in closed sessions so that you can talk frankly. We give you time to review their credentials so that you can get to know them a little bit, and then we tell you what we've learned about each candidate. And we don't pick favorites. That's really not our job. You will all come to this. We all come to this with our own favorites in our head, but sometimes the interviews are very enlightening because somebody who looks really great on paper flatlines the interview. What a dud. Boy, was I ever wrong. So we teach you to come, even though you may have some favorites after reading their credentials, you may know some of the candidates personally or know of them, but we always suggest that you go into the interview process with a clean slate, open mind, be objective, listen. We give you a little crash course, a little training session for that first round. And we have a very simple rating system, and we teach you how to use that so that we can have a good conversation after you've gotten to know those candidates and so that we can build some consensus on the two or maybe three candidates we want to bring back and get to know a little bit better, all right? So we do that in that next executive session. At the end of that, we go into open session and the board officially determines who they would like to bring in for an interview. That's all done above board. It's open, it's transparent. And at that point, we use the names of the candidates. When we're in closed session, we can't use the candidate names. We use other identifiers, candidate A, candidate B, candidate C, and we talk about them that way, and their names are redacted from their credentials. Otherwise, we would have to do that all in open session, which you could do if you preferred. We usually recommend the closed session because people will be more frank. And then we do what we need to do in open session with the full board. Questions on selection?
Questions from the board on this section? No, thanks, Tom.
Okay. So what happens next, and I did want to mention one other thing. So we do two rounds of interviews. The first round is usually between 15 and 20 questions. Those questions are created by us. They're based on feedback from you. They're also based on the community survey so that everybody feels like they've had some input in this process. Of course, the interviews are in open session. People are welcome to come, but the questions are tightly regulated, choreographed. We give you the list of the questions. We give you time to get to know the questions right before the interviews, but we keep those questions confidential so that nobody can make the accusation that any board member or any of us have done anything that wasn't totally transparent with those questions. Everybody gets to hear them. Everybody gets to hear the candidates' responses, and you'll be taking some notes as you're listening and you'll be rating those candidates. The second round of interviews, when we get to the finalist stage, that interview normally is structured a little differently. We feel that your next leader has to be a good presenter in addition to being able to answer questions well, they have to be able to present to people, community groups, your Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary, school district groups, administrator groups, school boards, school boards association, the county. So the second round interview, we do a 10 to 15-minute presentation. We ask them to create a presentation. It could be a presentation they'd already created for something else. We want the board to be able to listen to them. And if you're all asleep after the first three minutes, that's not a good sign for that second round. But that's an authentic assessment. It's a chance for you to kind of listen to how they'll perform on the job, and it's predictive also. And then we'll do about eight or 10 deep-dive questions, very in-depth questions that will really kind of give you an idea of how they make decisions, how they solve problems. Everybody will come here saying that they're a collaborative leader because they know that's what you want. But if every sentence starts with "I" and you hear a lot more "me's" than you hear other people, guess what? They may not really be a collaborative leader. They may not know how to be a collaborative leader, all right? So we listen to those things. We find out a lot about the candidates, and then we start to build consensus around who the board wants to offer the job to. Now, all along in that process, we've worked with the board. We know the salary that you're interested in paying because you've told us. I don't know it today. I know what you've paid in the past, but I don't know what you want to do with salary. But, you know, that's one of the questions that candidates will ask us. So in that first study session, I suggest that we strongly, you know, come to consensus on what we want, what we want to pay, salary and benefits, so that we can tell people so that when you get to the end of the road here and you're ready to offer employment to somebody, they already know what you're paying. There's no more mysteries. Our biggest nightmare is that the board sets their sights on a candidate and the candidate thinks that they're going to be getting $400,000 a year in salary here, and we have a huge meltdown. By that time, the board's eliminated everybody else and we've created an unrealistic expectation. So part of our job as a search consultant is to continue, as the candidates progress through this process, there are important questions that we ask them. The first question we ask them, we do this in the phone screener, is if you're offered that job, are you prepared to accept it? Because if they're not, if they can't answer that honestly, why interview them? It's a waste of everybody's time. But we also know that sometimes candidates who interview here might be interviewing in other districts. And again, sometimes we lose candidates because another district gets to them first. It happens. It's our job to know. Because the candidates trust us, they'll normally tell us if they're interviewing other places too. So we'll look at their timetable, we'll look at our timetable, and we'll prepare the board for the possibilities that can happen, all right? That's, again, part of being thorough. We don't do multiple searches at one time. We usually only do one or two a year. So you'll have our undivided attention. We're never in a hurry any more than you are because we don't believe this process needs to be forced or rushed, and we'll do a good job for you because you're a member of our organization. We have a vested interest in this district like we do all of our member districts. So the final phase of this is the offer of employment. And we work with the board on a contract. I believe that we're the only superintendent's search firm that participates in the contract negotiations primarily because we want to make sure that that goes smoothly. We don't feel we've done the job until that candidate is signed, sealed, and delivered, and there's a mutually agreeable contract. So we don't leave that to chance, all right? We'll work with you. Usually, we work with the board president and with the district's attorney. We're not attorneys. We don't write contracts. You may want a contract very similar to the one you had with Shelley or Michelle or Greg, or you may want something different. There may be some things you want to change. We'll work with you on that. We'll work with the candidates so they know, and they might have some things they'd like to have in the contract, and we'll be realistic with them on what we think that, you know, that they can have and can't have, all right? So the idea is we'll all come together around a mutually agreeable contract that everybody can live with and that everybody's comfortable with. We'll also help with the introduction to the community, and we also, because, you know, the analogy I draw is there's the wedding and there's the marriage, all right? The wedding is an event. It happens morning, evening, night, and then it's over. The marriage hopefully lasts a lifetime. The marriage is a process. A lot of moving parts to that marriage, all right? So the hiring, the search and the hiring of a superintendent is an event, but making sure that the board and the superintendent build a strong leadership is a process. It requires work on your part. It requires work and energy on the superintendent's part. So what we like to do, if you'll have us, is we'll come back a month or two months in after you've made a hire, and we'll conduct a nice session with the board and the superintendent on goals and operating principles so that, and sometimes it's nice to have an outsider coming and do that because we'll ask things that a new superintendent might be afraid to ask. So the idea is you get off to a strong start in terms of your evaluation of the superintendent and your expectations, and that those expectations are clearly communicated to your new superintendent. So again, we have a nice, long-lasting relationship that's been properly set up. Other questions you'd like to ask?
Members of the board, questions? Mr. Buckle?
Yeah, I have a couple here. The vetting process. You mentioned at one point you begin to vet the candidates. Does the board have a role to play in that vetting process?
Well, normally what we do is part of our vetting. I mentioned the paper screening. I forgot to mention reference checks, which is a huge aspect of this. We have a standard at the Metro Bureau, a minimum of three reference checks, one of which has to be from the immediate supervisor of that candidate, all right? We also have the ability to do criminal background checks. And because we know so many people who are in education, we usually know people who maybe were not listed as references, who we can confide in. Now, when you ask about the board's role in that, in my experience, because we have the human resources experience, it's really not appropriate for board members to go calling around about candidates because people don't know how to take that, and we're a third party, we're neutral in this. If something comes up in a candidate's background that we think the board needs to know about, we're certainly going to let you know. We're not going to hide anything from you. If that's a disqualifier, if we feel that whatever comes up is a disqualifier, we will tell you why we're not going to bring that candidate without even mentioning their name, why we're not going to bring them forward as an interview candidate because it's something we found out in their background, all right? In other words, you're hiring a search In other words, you're hiring a search firm because of their professionalism, because of their skills at vetting. I know you've had some bad experiences with that. I'd like to say we're very good at what we do. We check with a lot of people, and there's nothing more important than those reference checks to us.
I got a question.
What about site visitations? When we get down to the last couple of candidates, and we haven't had that last interview yet, do you recommend that board members make a site visit?
I would say this. There are boards that do that. To me, the purpose of a site visit is to validate. Now, by that point, you've interviewed the candidate. You feel like you know them. You've heard some things that they say. The purpose of the site visit is to find out if they really are who they say they are. So if we do a site visit, we kind of give you some tasks to accomplish. You'll be interviewing some people in their district. You'll be touring, meeting people. But really, your job, there's a purpose to this. It's not just a field trip. It's kind of a show-and-tell to find out if people think about that person the way they portrayed, all right? So it is a good way to investigate. Not many boards do it because it's very time-consuming, and it may involve some distant travel as well, depending on where they're coming from. But if that's what the board wants to do, we will set that up. I know when I interviewed in Romulus, they did a site visit in my old district, Airborne 7. It was only ten minutes down the road, so it wasn't a big travel expense or anything else. But it was a good experience for the board. It ended well for me. I have no complaints about it. And if that's something that the board wants to do, we will make sure that it's a good process for you.
One final question. You mentioned that we are a member of the Metro Bureau. Our district is. What cost would we be incurring if we were to choose Metro Bureau to lead us in our search?
It's in your proposal.
Yeah, it's in the proposal. It's eleven, we put in a bid at $11,500.
Eleven-five, thank you very much. I'm sorry I missed that.
That's okay. It's a long document.
Ms. Sias?
Yes, I just had a question coming up with background checks. How would you know if an employee signed one of those non-disclosures? How would that work?
Good question, okay. Between myself and the three other people that are the executive staff of the Metro Bureau, we have about ninety years of experience in human resources. We know when we smell a rat. That's the first thing. We usually know the circumstances when somebody is leaving a position, especially if they're from somewhere in Michigan. If not, we know people who do. And so we contact those people. Now, if what we're talking about is misconduct, that's a command report. A school district cannot not disclose an incident that involved misconduct. Somebody shows up to work drunk. Somebody gets in a fistfight and injures somebody at work, something like that. It has to be reported. Absolutely has to be. That doesn't mean that there haven't been districts that haven't reported it. But it is the law, and it is the school code. Could we be fooled? There's a possibility. However, if there's suspicion that we're not getting the whole story, we have a business partner that does investigations. They're private investigators. And it wouldn't be the first time that we work with that company. They are, they find out, trust me. They work with law enforcement all over the nation, and they're very good at that. So if that's a concern, we do have the capacity to find that out.
Mr. Neal?
Someone told our board that the interview itself may be the least successful in identifying the right candidate, whereas the record of that person, their past experience and their successes, might be the best indicator. What in your process will help us find that record?
Well, you're talking about their past experience?
Yes.
Well, we would not present anybody for an interview without letting you read through their resume, which is their employment history, their cover letter, all of their credentials and degrees, all of those things, so that you get to know them. Now, I'm not sure why someone would tell you that the interview isn't as important because it is, but the interview has a different purpose. During the interview, you're deciding whether that person who's interviewing is somebody that you want to work with based on their facial expressions, their communication, their attitude. You're kind of, you're getting to know their personality. There's no substitute for an interview in getting to know the personality of somebody. Someone can have ironclad credentials but not be a good fit for the board. And if you're not comfortable with them, they're not going to be a good fit. Boards have to be about style and substance. We help you with the substance, that's our job. But whether you feel that's somebody that will be a good fit for your board and your community, I can't do that for you. That comes from the interview.
One thing I do like, your suggestion that they do a presentation. I think that's a great way to get to know them. I like that. But going back to identifying their past successes, do we have any ability to contact people other than the ones they've listed as a reference?
When you say "we," are you saying the search firm?
Your firm.
Yes. Yes, in fact, we do that routinely. One of the questions that we ask in that phone screener interview, which is very telling, is, "Is there anybody in your current and your former district who we shouldn't contact as a reference? And if so, what would they tell us?" It may not seem real favorable. Now, not everybody's going to open up to a question like that, but it gives us a clue. But it's really their chance. A person with integrity will. They will tell you, "I locked horns with the union president. We were between a rock and a hard place. They wanted 3%, and we only had the money for 1%. And it was ugly." And they're probably not going to give me the best reference. But they're going to say that I treated them fairly, and they're going to understand. So we do some things that kind of give us a clue about that. And again, and we always let them know that we may be contacting people other than those listed because, of course, those are the people they want us to talk to. And there's nothing wrong with that. But sometimes we want to know a little bit more.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vice, I'm going to give you a hypothetical. And that is that, let's say there was a board who had a difficult experience with a former superintendent. And they were precluded from saying anything that might be derogatory in any way. How would you work that when superintendents may be coming from districts where their board is in the same situation?
Okay, well, we always try to get their side of the story because there usually are two sides to the story. And in those situations, we also look at the condition. Are they still employed in that district? Or was there a separation agreement in that district? If there's a separation agreement, a lot of times, those are private matters, and we may never find out the truth. So all we can do is ask the candidate. But sometimes, for some boards, leaving with a separation agreement is not a real good sign. And given your past experience, you may want to steer clear of somebody like that. Whether it was their fault or not their fault, you may feel that you can't afford to take the risk on a candidate like that. And that happens. Our job is to tell you everything we know. And I'm going to give you an example. This was our very first superintendent search, and it was over in Wyandotte. And I'm happy to report that that person is still superintendent after six and a half years. But there was something derogatory in that person's background. There was a lawsuit in Troy where that person worked as a first-year high school principal. That person was named in a lawsuit. There was an employee termination. The employee sued, and the employee prevailed. And there was a settlement. Now, that's not the person that became the superintendent. But that candidate was asked to explain the circumstances. She was very honest about it. We got a copy of the court case. We happened to know the attorneys that represented the district. And because it was a public matter, because it was a jury trial, we found out the skinny on that story. Meanwhile, the board decided, "Well, we like this candidate. We want to interview them." They knew full well. Now, the interesting thing that happened was the rumor mill kind of ended up. But the board was prepared because they know the true story. They knew what happened in the court case. They knew, anybody that wanted to read it, we gave them a copy. And they still wanted to interview that candidate. And I have to say, that candidate was a great interview. That candidate was their first choice. And that candidate is still doing a nice job in that district. So it's, you know, it's taking the time to ask the hard questions, and some people may not be comfortable. And if we're in a situation where somebody's not going to come clean with us, it's our job to say, "Look, I'm afraid I can't bring you any farther along in this process. It wouldn't be fair to the board and the district based on this" because they don't want a mystery.
Okay, thank you.
I have no questions myself. Carl, I want to thank you for coming here tonight. We certainly appreciate that you were able to be here on short notice. And we appreciate that we have a, we have an organization like the Metro Bureau available to us to handle this. I think that your presentation was very thorough, and I appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And again, I appreciate the opportunity, and I wish you the best of luck, whether we happen to be the firm that's doing the search or you're going with one of the other two firms. I wish you the best of luck. I know it's important to you. I know it's a high priority, and we'll do everything we can to support you in that role, whether that's being your search firm or not. Thank you again for the time, and best of luck to all of you. Great to see you all again.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, 456.19, is selection of a superintendent search firm. I'll open this up for questions, comments, or I can make some observations of my own at this point. Okay, we're going to recess for five minutes. Carl?
I just called to recess. I wonder if you wouldn't mind coming around and shaking my hand.
Oh, certainly.
Appreciate so much.
Oh, my pleasure, my pleasure. Can I, is there time for me to?
There is. There is, I can turn it over five minutes.
Drive safely.
Great to meet you.
Thank you very much. Carl, I noticed your hand is about 25 degrees Fahrenheit.
Yeah, I run a little, I run a little cool.
I think the rumor's a little cool.
Great to see you again.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thanks again for the opportunity.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Drive safely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Middell. The board is back in session, and we are now reviewing 456.19, which is the selection of a superintendent search firm. If any board member wishes to talk first, I'm certainly.
I got some questions.
Sure, Ms. Sias.
Because I'm just going over some of the prices. I just want to make sure I'm clear. So for the Michigan Leadership Institute, that'd be like $8,800. And then for the Metro Bureau, it'd be $11,500. Now, is MSAB $17,000?
Yes, and actually, Michigan Leadership Institute would be about $9,600, an amount not to exceed $9,600. So yes, Michigan Association of School Boards was $17,000 plus expenses. Michigan Leadership Institute was $8,800 plus, an amount not to exceed $800 for expenses. And Metro Bureau was all in at $11,500.
Thank you.
Just a comment.
And let's just be informal about this.
We've worked with MSB before, and we've worked with the Michigan Leadership Institute. Metro Bureau, not so much for this kind of action. I have no problems with Michigan Leadership or with MSB, you know, going forward. I think it sometimes comes down to money, too, because they all seem to have the same comparable types of services that they're offering. Same process, same amount of weeks. It's just, you know, who do you trust? Is what it comes down to.
Dr. Weaver?
I like the detail that Mr. Silvery shared with us. I thought that he was not better prepared, but his presentation in its detail was something that I think would serve us better. So I would like to, I'd like for this board to think about going in that direction. Thank you.
Mr. Neal?
Well, a little different take, maybe, is that I feel our district has gone through some hard times. And one of the things that I'm most concerned about is any search group fully understanding our real circumstances that we live with here and what we've gone through recently. One of the things I like about Metro Bureau is that 50% of their staff has an intimate knowledge of our district, one having been our superintendent for seventeen years. And Dr. Carnell, I mean, I can't begin to tell you how impressed I was and am of Dr. Carnell and her ability to step into our district, understand what we have, assimilate the information quickly, and make decisions. I personally feel very comfortable knowing that those kinds of people are the ones that are out there looking to find someone that would be best suited for Wayne Westland.
If I can just share, again, in terms of the type of person that we need, and I know we're down the road in that area, but we really need someone who is really good with people and relationships, has the backbone to stand up when he or she needs to, but by and large, leading by example and, you know, pushing in that direction.
It's funny you should say that because it's kind of a lead-in to what I wanted to say. You know, this whole process of reviewing search firms has been very eye-opening for me. I heard Melody ask a question tonight relative to if you signed a non-disclosure agreement. And I thought, "That was a really good question." And I thought Mr. Buckaloo had made a statement relative to vetting, and how is that going to be accomplished? And what role is the board going to take? And both of these questions are coming from the same place. And that place is, we want to make sure that we do not make a mistake that somebody applying for the job of superintendent isn't representing that there's something that they're not, that we have looked into this, that we know everything there is to know, so that we don't make a mistake, so that we can achieve the result that you're talking about. And I sat here and I listened to Mr. Bennett's presentation from MSB, and it was wonderful. Nobody searching for a search firm could have had anything but positives to say about the way MSB is approaching this. Unfortunately, that's not the product we got two years ago when we went to MSB for this very same thing. And the reason that we would need all of the vetting and all of the credential check and the criteria- and all of the credential check and the criteria and the background and all that kind of thing is because we were looking at a candidate that was as far away west as you could be and still be in the continental United States. And the same thing is really true for the Michigan Leadership Institute. You heard, I heard, I counted it four times, he said, "You call the shots." What that says to me is, you're the one responsible for who you hire. I heard Mr. Weiss say, "It's our job to help you search for the right person." And I'm thinking to myself, as he's saying that, about what the other two presenters were saying, that, that he works in, in an area where he knows every single one of the eighty-two school districts. And he has confidence that the person that's going to be a candidate for this role is, is within that. As a matter of fact, he said over a dozen are, is in that area. It almost precludes the need to, to vet them, to do background checks. They all know everybody. They, they know each other. They've gone to all of the superintendent meetings together. They've known each other for years and years, no doubt. And they, if they don't personally know each other, they know people who do. That question that you asked, Ms. Heinz, about whether you sign an agreement, they've been talking about that at lunch for the last six months. And I fundamentally believe that someone who's going to do this for us really needs to know, to have what, what Mr. Silvery called a stakeholder background. Needs to know what the community thinks, what the school district thinks, what the employees have gone through. I think that's a big element. I thought it was a big element two years ago, and I thought it was a big element twenty years ago. And this is also my fourth superintendent search. Dwayne Moore, Greg Berisi, yeah, and Shelley Holt, and now today. So, and I think that in all those cases, people not understanding the unique nature of our school district, the diversity of our student population, what so many of our educators have gone through with respect to the pay and what have you, what they've experienced in the last couple of years, all, all of the new people, we've lost so much historic knowledge from our district. All of those things are really important to us. And I know that whomever is the search people, they need to really have a strong understanding of that. It's not just about process. If it were just about process, everybody could just do what M A S B said to do, and that would be considered a perfect job. It's really about understanding the heart of the school district and what it needs at this point in history, and who out there is a good fit for that role. I mean, I know, as the man said, "We're calling the shots, we're calling the shots." I know that. And I think just what Mr. Neal said. Sue Carnell is part of that organization. We still have a contract with her to cut, to act as the coach for our interim superintendent. That's how strongly this board feels about her perspective. She certainly has, has the beat of the school district. She understands what the teachers and what the support people have gone through. Personally, she understands. And I don't know if Dr. Berisi's experience, you know, it's been a few years since he's been here, but he certainly understands the community. He lives in the community.
One thing that I do feel strongly about the Michigan Leadership Institute, they helped us do our strategic plan. So they spent hours with the community, even with the Gray reconfiguration, because that went smoothly. So they, you know, he's already vested into the, in our district, especially knowing like what our plans are with developing that strategic plan. And we've been able to hit just about every point on there. So they have a lot of experience with our district and the community. They've been very, very like phenomenal on all our tasks that we had when we worked with them in the past.
What I did not hear from Metro Bureau was about mentoring. The other two companies, you know, did talk about that they, they were available for the first year to help mentor not only the school board, but also the new superintendent.
No, actually, he, he did. He said exactly that.
And I, and I'm looking for it in the.
No, he said exactly that right there from the lectern. He said that he thinks that's a very important part. I, I noticed it because Michigan Leadership Institute called it New Governance Team Workshop. And it's the component, although he didn't have a name for it, the components were exactly the same as that. He did, he did mention that.
We're just off of this on, on that particular issue. Our, our new superintendent, whether it be Dr. Harmel or, or Dr. Holt, were given a two-year membership in, in the Metro Bureau. Well, in fact, we belong to the Metro Bureau. And they were able to take advantage of the networking services that the Metro Bureau offers. And that in itself is, is a form of mentoring. I'm not sure. I can't speak one way or the other as to whether or not there's a specific mentoring service provided. I, I didn't hear that. But that doesn't mean it wasn't said. But there is a mentoring system in the sense that you're given that, that introduction to networking that I know that Dr. Harmel took great advantage of. And I think Dr. Holt, to a lesser degree, but to some degree, also took advantage of.
And I'll, I'll tell you that I am, I have a LinkedIn relationship with Metro Bureau. And that is their business, mentoring. That's what they're doing most of the time. They're not doing superintendent searches all the time. They're doing the meetings at Wayne State, so.
So I have a, I have a comment if, if, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No.
No. So I listen to all these people.
I see a big difference in price. And I thought, my God, over seventeen thousand versus around nine thousand. Then I thought, it doesn't matter. That's, that's, that shouldn't be a consideration in which group we pick. We need to do something right. Which brings me to another point of view. At least one member of this board, sitting on the end of the table here, has relied on the search company to do the, the heavy lifting and maybe ninety-nine percent of the work of choosing a superintendent. And at least one member of the board is going to be more involved in, in that process than ever before. I would hope that others feel the same way and that, that we really dig in and, and ask pointed questions. Come prepared, all of us, all the time. And that we take this with, with the gravity that it, that it needs to be taken with.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if that's exactly the way it is. I know I feel the same way that you do.
Mr. President, I think that part of our openness and relationship during this process, I just make this statement. Last two superintendent searches I've been in, there have been brought in several candidates that seem to be very weak and then one star. And of course, a board's going to gravitate to the sc, to the star. I would just caution us, caution myself and, and caution the members of the board. We, we have to get the right person, not the star, not, not somebody that's going to be about themselves, but be about the district.
You know, I remember Mr. Buckaloo making a statement relative to that a month or two ago. And I also remember Mrs. Walker saying that, that, that what she wanted was for this process to be done properly, for there not to be a rush to judgment, for us to, to do everything right. And, and I agree. I, I, I'd like my, I'd like my colleagues to consider that having, having a company that, that deals strictly for all practical purposes in Western Wayne County, the tri-county area, and who has, in their, in their executive team, two people who have served as superintendents of the Wayne Westline School District is no small thing. I, that's not, I think all three firms are fine firms. I think they all, they all do a good job for many school districts throughout the state. But I think we are a unique school district, and I don't think any of the firms understand that more than the people at Metro Bureau. I mean, even the director of Metro Bureau was superintendent in the district directly south of us. It's just, you just can't get any closer. They're all sitting in our living room right now. They certainly would understand what we would be looking for. So, well, with that.
Question, question for you, Mr. Cox. Earlier tonight, we were talking in general terms about search firms. And I, I seem to recall that you were of the opinion that M A S B had redesigned their approach to superintendent searches. Is that so? And if so, can you elaborate on that a bit?
I don't factually know that. I just know that what they presented to us the other evening wasn't anywhere near what we received just two years ago. And I was just surmising that they, I mean, obviously, the M A S B is well aware of what happened to the Wayne Westline School District after our last search. If they're not aware, then, well, they are aware.
Well, do you think it might only be just a matter of the person who led us through the last two searches versus Mr. Bennett?
No, because I don't believe that Mr. Bennett wasn't there last time.
Difference in the two people?
No, but I mean, there's a leader's leader, there's a leadership level that wasn't there last time. In other words, there's leadership infrastructure at M A S B that did not exist when we had our last search.
As you said, all of these three, all three of these groups are very, very good. I tend to be a little partial to M A S B. But that's, that's just one opinion.
Well, I guess at some point, we have to, we have to decide what direction we're going to go in.
And one thing I like, too, about the Michigan Leadership Institute was the vetting. You know, I was like, they're going to do most of the bulk of the work. Because that is a lot of work, when you have all those resumes, staying up late, you know, so. They're heavily invested in making sure of the process. And it was just so professional, like each step of the way to make sure that we get everything we need. Even with the, going to the different sites, you know, they were more in detail of exactly what we're going to get for what we're paying for.
I, I liked a, excuse me, I, I liked what you said concerning the Metro Bureau. I'm certainly not opposed to them. You have two former superintendents, plus the superintendent to the south of us, that perhaps really can go to the heart of what we need. So I, I, I see your point on that. Thank you.
I'd like to add on Metro Bureau. I think they described vetting as well as any of the others. But I, it's just a personal thing with me in, in that, that you hit on two things that I found important in my past. And that is, I've done a lot of interviews for promotions and for hiring for city services. And one of the things that I required of people in management positions was they had to do a presentation. Metro Bureau was the only one that brought up that as an assessment tool. And also, one of the things that I did, it was one of my favorite questions, was much like they talked about, ask who it is that I shouldn't talk to, where they previously worked, and why I shouldn't talk to them, what they might say that would be negative. And I found it interesting that he brought that up. And I know that's a minor thing, because at that point, it's just a question asked. But it's one they hit a button with me.
You know, I wrote down notes on every single company. And, and Mr. Buckaloo, I, I agree with you. M A S B is a highly professional organization. They had made a great presentation. Ms. Heinz, the Michigan Leadership Institute's a fine organization with fine people. There's absolutely no argument for me, they're top drawer. I don't think we can really make a mistake with anyone that we would select tonight. But you know, one of the things that Mr. Weiss said that I did write down, and I really liked, the, the first presenter tonight talked about how that which the Wayne Westline School District has gone through for the last year is an issue. That, that people that are applying for the job, you know, it is something that they're looking at. It is something that they're going to have to be, for lack of a better term, kind of sold on. Everything's, it is okay. It's as if, I feel as though we're the ones that got run over by a truck. I mean, I, I don't know that any member of the Board of Education did anything to create the circumstance that existed this past year. I, I showed up in a meeting on the seventeenth of June, and there was three times as many people in this room as the fire marshal would allow into it. I certainly didn't invite them here. They came here on their own. I walked into this circumstance. I didn't create it. And, and I understand what he's, what Mr. Silvery's saying. I, I know that it's out there. But what I heard Mr. Weiss say was, you have, you have a lot of strengths and assets. I, that's exactly what he said. This district has a lot of strengths and assets. We need to make, we need, you're going to attract the right people. We're going to market the position. I think we do have a lot of strengths and assets. And the other thing he said was, someone's going to look at this school district and see, yes, we've had some challenges, but we also have some very positive things. We have stable financing for the first time since the late nineteen seventies. We, we, we passed a, we passed a bond issue. It's no, it's no small thing. And in spite of our challenges, we're all working together right now as we have through this whole thing. And I think that he recognizes that. And, and I, and I, I like that, too.
Now, I got one question, because this does concern me, with the community involvement, with Sue Carnell being our consultant and with Dr. Berisi being the prior superintendent. If people might think it's some kind of the kickbacks or something, you know, with the, because you know, these people, they're so negative. And I just don't want them thinking it might be some type of conflict with the contract and with Dr. Carnell being one of our consultants with this and then with Dr. Berisi. Because, you know, people can spin things kind of ways. And I'm kind of concerned, you know, how the appearance would be.
Well, no.
Would it cost them more than the other, you know, like in the prices as well?
Well, I, I think we're going to have to pay for this service, no matter who we elect, to help us with it. And I agree with Mr. Buckaloo. Well, one is charging us seventeen thousand plus expenses. The other eight thousand eight hundred plus eight hundred in expenses, possibly, not to exceed eight hundred. And the third that we saw, eleven thousand five hundred. And I know there's a difference in those amounts, but I think it's negligible next to the product we're getting. And Dr. Carnell is going to continue to be paid as a coach if we were to select M A S B until we get a, a new superintendent.
But how would the pay go with this as well? Because she's our, you know, consultant, and then with this, it's like being double paid.
Well, she, she works for this company, just like you have a job outside of your responsibilities.
Right, but I'm just saying with the contract, it just looks, it might.
She would consider, she would continue to be, I think it runs to the end of the year, the contract?
I thought it did.
For Dr. Simmons or for?
No, no, it's an amount not to exceed ten thousand. That's what, I'm just going off memory. But I believe that we had appropriated, that she can continue her, her coaching, consulting relationship indefinitely, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. And I, I recall talking to Mrs. Simmons that they haven't even talked as many times as they had imagined they would talk. So I don't think they're anywhere near that amount.
But would they be double dipping, though, with her being with the Metro Bureau at the same time? Being a consultant?
No, it wouldn't be double dipping.
Which is not an employee. And we've had contracts with M L I as well, so.
You keep saying seventeen thousand. I'm trying to find where you're getting that figure.
Oh, because they had eight thousand five hundred for the first part, M A S B, and another eight thousand five hundred for the second part, M A S B.
They had it in the total. The total was seventeen.
Okay.
Plus expenses. Mr. Neal?
I'd like to make a motion that we engage the services of Metro Bureau.
Is there support? There's been a motion to engage the services of Metro Bureau. Is there support for Metro Bureau? Support by Dr. Weaver? Is there discussion on the motion and support?
I, I, I truly think that we need to look closely at Michigan Leadership Institute. I'm sorry. They have been working with our district for a lot of years. They, they probably know more about our district than we do ourselves, because they have been out in the field. They have been talking to parents. They've been talking to stakeholders. They've been talking to students. They've been part of the process right along. They, they know exactly what this school district is about and where we need to go.
Is there further discussion? Is there further discussion?
I concur with Ms. Madell the same way. They haven't, they've been working with us for years, especially our strategic plan, so they know exactly what we, because they gave us our plan. It's been pretty successful.
Okay. And further discussion? Will call vote?
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
No.
Mrs. Madell?
No.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
And Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Split vote, three and three.
Okay, the motion fails. Okay, so we've said no on the Metro Bureau. Do I hear another motion?
I would like to propose that we hire Michigan Leadership Institute as our superintendent search firm.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Hines? Is there a discussion? Will call vote?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
And myself, I'll say yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Unanimous, M L I.
Okay. The Michigan Leadership Institute, Mr. John Silvery leading, has been contracted. We will notify him as soon as possible. Thank you, members of the board. The next issue on our agenda is four five seven point one nine, which is citizens' questions and comments on non-agenda items. Any citizens wishing to address the board on non-agenda items? Citizen?
I think he's asleep.
He is not asleep. Thank you. We'll now go to review and recommendations, members of the Board of Education. Dr. Weaver?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo.
We entertained three really good firms, and I would have been happy with any one of the three. I would just like to take my hat off to those people who helped make the decision, a unanimous one tonight. I think that that goes a long way towards the unity that we're going to need moving So my thanks to those board members who made it unanimous. We have a lot of work to do, and I think that we need to all, some of us always come prepared. The rest of us need to emulate that good practice moving forward. We need to make a good choice. We need, as a group, to know what it is we're looking for in a superintendent. Ain't no way we're going to know we found it if we don't know what it is we're looking for. There was some talk about us meeting next Tuesday. I don't know if that's appropriate or not. Mr. Cox, perhaps you might speak to whether or not you want us to sit down and brainstorm what it is we're looking for, or do you want to pass on that?
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. I will have something to say about that in comments. Is that...
I'm done.
Ms. Hines?
I concur with Mr. Buckaloo that I'm really glad that we're all able to work together in unison to do what's best, you know, move this district forward, and I'm really excited about this superintendent search.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Madell?
You know, I really didn't think I was ever going to be in this position of being part of another superintendent search. It's not an easy process. It can be arduous. A lot of reading, a lot of soul searching, a lot of understanding where we are going in the next couple of years, because that will affect our choice. It'll affect how we approach the candidates for this position. Hopefully, like my colleague here says, that we could work together and make this less arduous than it needs to be.
Thank you, Ms. Madell. Mr. Neal?
I'm happy that we've been successful in each step of the way so far, and I'm sure that we'll be likewise successful in our next step. I haven't experienced this before, I'm looking forward to the challenge, and I'm glad that we approached this in a unanimous fashion as well.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. As Mr. Buckaloo said, we have a special meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. What I would like to do is, I would like to change that into a study session, cancel the special meeting, but have a study session next Tuesday at six thirty, the purpose of which will be to discuss those traits that we wish our next superintendent to have. And this, I think that this has made an easier process by what this board has dealt with, the fact that we have already done a superintendent search. We know what traits of the superintendent we liked, and what traits we would like to see. We also should be in a position to be able to talk about what type of previous experience they've had, whether it's been central office experience or actual superintendent experience, whether we would like the superintendent to have a doctorate, or if a master's degree, with the preference of a doctorate is what we're looking for, all aspects, so that the most information that we give the Michigan Leadership Institute, I think the better this process is going to be. So if members of the board could, would be in a position to openly discuss that next Tuesday, next Tuesday's meeting will be a study session as opposed to a board meeting. And with that, I'd like to thank my colleagues. Personally, I think that we've done a good job under the circumstances. I think we're asking intelligent questions that are getting to the heart of the matter as quickly as possible. And also, I know that we've had a lot of meetings, this has been a year of meetings, but they've all been necessary, and I appreciate your cooperation. Thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sound moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, support.
Support.
Support by Ms. Hines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.